Good evening and welcome to the February 12, 2019 San Bruno City Council meeting, calling it to order. We also want to thank the Garden Club for providing the floral arrangement. If I could ask, please, Mr. Chief Barberini, if you could lead us in the pledge, since you won.
Our pledge, ladies and gentlemen, is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here. Any speaker cards? Any speaker cards?
We do have one. Bob Chandra?
Good evening.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today, and I want to thank Councilman Marty Medina for inviting us today. Some of you may have heard about the scandal involving Harvey Weinstein. Weinstein is a Hollywood producer, and over 30 years, he sexually harassed or raped over 80 women that we know about. He did this over such a long period of time, it makes you wonder, how did he get away with it for so long? The answer to that question came in an expose from The New Yorker, which described a system Weinstein used against his victims using private investigative firms. The PI firms were used to intimidate and harass these women, so as to deter them from going public with their concerns. If they were walking on foot, the PI firm would follow her around town. If she was in the park with her family, the PI would come in an intimidating SUV and park nearby. The point was to silence Weinstein's Me Too victims, and it worked for 30 years. This system is called covert harassment, and it was not just Weinstein who's used this system. Increasingly, it's a collection of techniques, a protocol, that the wealthy and the powerful are using against the powerless. It systematically breaks down the target in a secretive, psychological way. Covert harassment often includes improper surveillance, such as the kind I described, tailing and following, hacking of devices, and coordinated harassment. It is meant to cause fear, stress, and paranoia in the subject. Another group that uses covert harassment is Scientology. Leah Rimini, a Hollywood actress and former Scientologist, produced a documentary showing video evidence of how Scientology members follow and harass critics. A Department of Justice study found several hundred thousand Americans suffer from this predatory behavior. In other words, we know the problem is pervasive. Our support group, Live Free, works with dozens of victims, and two-thirds are women. The problem goes far beyond Weinstein. We are requesting that San Bruno pass a citywide resolution condemning covert harassment. We believe such a resolution would make the seriousness of the crime clear to everyone involved. Most of all, it would make the victims of this systematized harassment feel that they've been heard. A resolution would put the Weinsteins out there on notice. We request to meet with city staff and discuss the issue in greater detail, and explore feasibility of drafting a city resolution to this end. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wanted to speak on items that are on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to announcements. First and foremost, we want to recognize the participants of the recent Battle of the Badges, this blood drive that was held on January 2 at Fire Station 51. Chief Crest.
Good evening, Mayor Medina, members of the council. Yeah, we did want to provide a report on the recent blood drive for a variety of reasons. First of all, we want to recognize the members of the public who turned out to support this event. It was, as you're going to hear in a minute, it was a fabulous turnout, and so, as usual, the city with heart really stood up and donated blood. Secondly, we want to acknowledge a staff that put this effort together, and behind me, you see Catherine Kurt and Sherri Campbell from the Police Department, who took on this project, and as you'll hear in a second, is a very involved project, and made it the success that it was. And then lastly, we want to acknowledge our cooperation with the American Red Cross. We have Doug Coons from the Red Cross here. This idea originated from Doug. Doug is a liaison to the Community Preparedness Committee, and he brought this idea to me sometime last year, put me in touch with the members of the Red Cross who do the blood drives, and I learned a little bit about the process. It's probably eight to 12-week planning process to do this event. They mentioned the fact that the Battle of the Badges would have been a good, kind of a good plan to do to generate interest in the event, so I reached out to the police chief, and he was all for it. Once we enlisted these two to do all the work, we were happy about that. Right, chief? So they really took the ball and run. They worked with the Red Cross, and through various meetings and planning sessions, they came up with a date of January 2 and a location of Fire Station 51. I had my concerns about the location. Obviously, a working fire station for a blood event, a blood donation event, as well as the date around the holidays posed some concerns, but they persevered. They got their donors, they got their volunteers to step up, and they hit the social media and got the interest up to get the event successful. And so, the event was held on January 2. Due to the planning and their advertising efforts, 32 of the 37 slots that were allotted for the event were filled prior to the event, so that was pretty amazing. The event resulted in 36 successful donors, which produced 33 productive units of blood, which was well exceeded the goal of 25. So, the Police Department did narrowly win the Battle of the Badges, so that's why I'm up here making the presentation. Ed gets to sit back there and relax. So, before I ask if there's any questions, I'd like Doug to come up. Doug has a statement from the Red Cross he'd like to share with the group.
Please, Doug.
Good evening. I'd like to read this letter we have from the Disaster Program Chair of the Northern California Coastal Region of the Red Cross. Dear Mayor Medina, thank you for the San Bruno Fire Department and Police Department hosting a Red Cross blood drive. With the number and size of the disasters that have affected our country this past year, there have been fewer donations than in the past. Lately, blood products have been distributed to hospitals faster than donations are coming in. Because the San Bruno Fire Department and San Bruno Police Department hosted this blood drive, lives can be saved right now. The blood drive went extremely well. There was a full appointment schedule and a significant number of walk-ins. This resulted in a total, as the chief said, 33 productive units. An excellent turnout with the first drive, which had a goal of 25 units. Significantly exceeded the goal. We would also like to acknowledge Catherine Kurt of the Fire Department and Sherri Campbell of the Police Department for their efforts to put this drive together. There is no end to the benefits of donating blood for those who need it. One donation can save as many as three lives, and someone in the United States needs blood every two seconds. Thank you again for the city of San Bruno's impactful commitment to this worthy cause. Together, we can make a real and vital difference when it matters the most. I want to thank you personally for everything that they've done and the wonderful job they did, and with luck, maybe we could do this again next year. And by the way, we do have another blood drive scheduled, April 20, at the Burlingame Red Cross office, so anybody that would like to donate can sign up and come donate there. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
So that's it. If you had any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
And then, Doug, thank you for your work and all that you do. You were there all day. I stopped by, I've seen you down at San Mateo, so you get around and you help out in many ways and capacities, so thank you for your efforts and the Red Cross's. Any questions, comments from council? The only thing I was going to say is, I was there, and the chief is, this chief is correct that that department won by, I think, one, but it was close. But what was rewarding was, you would think, January 2, after a holiday, that we had folks in both departments, on duty, mostly off-duty, who traveled in to go ahead and donate to the cause. We had some folks that walked their dog and saw something and sat there for an hour, waiting, because they thought it was worth the cause, the effort, that the departments did. So as you've initiated this maybe first annual, I would say that, to the two ladies, excellent job to the departments, everybody got behind it, and I think you could find, if we had more people available to maybe draw more, I bet you we can get more. So I want to thank everybody in all the departments and the staff, as well as the Red Cross and both chiefs, and of course, those that did all the work, that's standing behind Chief Cresta. So, thank you very much to all of you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Doug, you might as well follow all the uniforms. They'll get you home safe. Next, on the under announcements and presentations, Item B, receive the annual report from the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee. And we're going to have the Chair, Marco Duranzio.
Dear Honorable Mayor Medina and esteemed members of the City Council, it is my unique honor to present the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee's annual report to you. The work of the TSPC and its collaborative efforts with city staff, council, and our residents is a highlighter, a best practice of how municipalities can work with residents to identify, discuss, and more importantly, work together to solve traffic, safety, and parking issues. Before I get into the presentation, I would like to acknowledge and thank my current colleagues on the TSPC, Tom Hamilton, John Guzmani, and Scott Thomas, who are here with us tonight. I would also like to acknowledge the service of former TSPC members Jessica Barnes-Davis and Mark Howard. I would also mention the efforts of our city staff and San Bruno PD for always being there with us. There's a saying that goes, teamwork makes the dream work, and the service and partnership between the committee, the city, the committee and the city are really what make, give meaning to that phrase. The TSPC was the vehicle by which I was able to get involved in serving our city, and it often amazes me when residents come to our meetings feeling frustrated, upset, looking for answers, as they were last week, and amazed that the committee is comprised of fellow community members who freely give their time to listen to them, help generate possible solutions, all in the name of making our community better, safer, and something we can all be proud to call home. I want to spend a bulk of my time discussing how the TSPC has moved the needle forward in 2018, and I want to share a little bit about what is on the horizon in 2019. Before that, however, let me summarize the role and the duties of the TSPC. The TSPC reviews and recommends actions to the City Council on traffic calming issues, parking, local traffic issues. It also reviews policies and programs affecting traffic and parking for final City Council approval, such as the Parking Restriction Application, Traffic Calming Toolkit, and the Crosswalk Installation Guide. A large piece of the work that we do is rooted in public engagement. Mailers, use of the city website, staff contact information, monthly public meetings are all examples of how the TSPC has interacted with, dialogued, and been a thought partner for our community. This past year, 108 community members attended our monthly meetings. Now for the accomplishments. The TSPC has recommended a red curb bus zone in front of 901 Cherry Avenue for YouTube shuttles, a yellow curb zone on El Camino near Victory Honda, a yellow curb zone on Huntington Avenue for development at 111 San Bruno Avenue, recommended reducing the red curb zone on Rosewood Drive east of Glenbrook Avenue, recommended denial of overnight parking restrictions near Commodore Park, recommended denial of no parking restriction for the west side of the 700 block of Cherry Avenue. And in an important example of the collaborative work between the TSPC and the city, the TSPC participated in a joint subcommittee meeting for residential permit parking program. With respect to safety, the TSPC -- It's so much harder to think between reading this and clicking this, it's amazing. Like, what page am I on at the moment? With respect to safety, the TSPC has recommended pedestrian safety improvements, including a new crosswalk at the intersection of Huntington Avenue and Lucid Avenue. The TSPC has also recommended signalization of the Bay Hill Shopping Center driveway on Cherry Avenue and the adjacent mid-block crosswalk. And we also recommend a no-change to the traffic signals at the intersection of Santa Lucia Avenue and Parkwood Drive. In this regard, I want to highlight the recommended improvements at the intersection of San Bruno Avenue and Cherry Avenue that include median modification to add a southbound left turn-only lane, flashing yellow operation for northbound and southbound left turn movements, southbound right turn overlap phase, leading pedestrian intervals for the crosswalks across San Bruno Avenue, improved lighting for pedestrians if needed, high-visibility crosswalks, possible realignment of crosswalks to improve pedestrian safety. There are many accomplishments, but what is in store for 2019? In 2019, the TSPC will develop recommendations for a new policy for issuing permits for closure of residential streets for neighborhood events, review the special parking restriction policy, review the traffic calming toolkit procedures, and develop recommendations for a policy for evaluating requests for conversion of residential streets to a one-way traffic pattern. As I mentioned earlier, public engagement is critical to the work of the TSPC. Below is the information that we share on a monthly basis with folks who attend our meetings. We encourage them to contact us, to dialogue with us, to work with us, so that we can collectively solve many of the issues, many of the parking issues affecting our city. It's been an honor serving on this committee, it's been an honor working collaboratively with the council, and it was really the catalyst by me getting involved in San Bruno and serving the committee, so it's an honor to be here tonight, an honor to be here with the committee. And I'm happy to answer any questions or any comments.
Thank you. Any questions of council? So I will say then, on behalf of council, Marco, to you, John, Scott, Tom, thank you, and yes, we did hear last week, you know, you had a little action. So, we want to thank you too, because obviously, I was joking that sometimes I think you have more attendance at your meetings sometimes than we do at ours. And I know that they're trying to get something better, trying to find a way, and I know it's always difficult and challenging trying to work within a system to find the best approach, and you hit on some words I love, which are collaborative and working together to try to find some resolve. We're not going to always find the best solution, but hopefully something better than what we began with, and leaving it better than we found it. So, I really want to thank all of you for what you've done and are doing, because it does take a lot, and sometimes you have the passion of individuals, and you're the ones first receiving it, and then we may receive it later after you bring recommendations, but you try to get it all set with staff. So thank you for your work and your effort, and we appreciate it and look forward to 2019. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to consent.
All items are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
I know for myself, it's not about, I don't need to pull it, but I want to have some additional comments, and I had some questions on Item E for myself. Is there anybody else?
And to the Chair, I have a comment or questions for Item F.
Anyone else? I have E, I have F. Is it good?
I'm good.
Okay. Any action on the rest?
I will make a motion to approve the remainder.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve all but E and F. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
By voto, we have a unanimous decision. Item E, that was myself, that's the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with Mays and Associates for financial audit services for three years in the amount of $158,124. And I think it was more for us to hear, because I got, when I was at City Hall, I had asked a couple questions. One is, this is our current auditor that just presented to us a short time ago, you're asking for an extension of their agreement to continue the services to the city, which is a requirement that we have the audit. So, that would be a three-year agreement. So the questions are, how long do you see that we let a service provide that service to the city? So is it three years, six years, nine years, et cetera? Two, is it, how did you, how were you, how did you think they did? And, you know, you're coming in from another perspective, so it's a good set of eyes and a new person at the helm to give us that feedback. On a scale of 1 to 10, where would you place them? And then also, you had alluded to something as far as the economic aspect of it being within parameters based on the service and costs.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Medina. Be happy to answer those questions. Keith DiMartini, the Finance Director for the city. And so, to answer some of your questions, we have had Mays and Associates under contract to perform financial auditing services for the city for three fiscal years now. We did have a competitive bidding process when we decided to bring them onboard, and the decision was made by council approximately three years ago. And so, before you tonight is a request to extend their contract for three more years of providing financial auditing services. To answer your first question, I do believe that retaining them for an additional three years is completely appropriate, given the scope of the audit services that they provide, and the fact that there have been quite a lot of staff turnover with the city as of late, which I know the council is aware. I do believe it's a best, it's a best practice, and it's advantageous for the city to retain our independent outside auditor during this period where we are bringing a number of staff up to speed. I believe that they have performed exemplary financial auditing services for the city over the three years that, as I discussed with staff that have worked with them directly, and have reviewed their financial audit statements, and in this current year, where I worked very closely with them on preparing the fiscal year 1718 financial statements and audit, I was very much impressed and satisfied with the work that they performed. On a scale of 1 to 10, I'd give them, you know, an eight or a nine, I guess would be. I think they, given my experience working with auditing firms for the past 14 years, they are great, and I want to extend them for an additional three years.
Any questions from colleagues? Okay. Yeah.
No, I thank you for pulling it, because that was one of the items I was also interested in hearing a little bit more about. So, this contract, it's for three more years now, can, let's say, it goes for a year, what are the potential for a breakup of the contract? Is it mutually required, or how does that work?
So, we have the right to terminate the contract after, really, any point in time. So if we move into the fourth year or the fifth year, and the city is not satisfied with the services that are being performed by our independent auditor, we can terminate the agreement. And just to go back to one of the questions that you asked, Mayor Medina, I apologize, about the economic considerations. For us to extend the contract, Mays is basically keeping their fee to us flat, which is going to result in cost savings on this contract for us. I fully suspected that if we were to go out to bid and have a process, I do not believe that we would get as competitive of a rate from another auditor.
Thank you for that, too. My last question is, typically, how long does an auditor stay onboard with the city? It seems like at some certain point, it would be beneficial to have a new set of eyes, so that there's kind of like something different, someone, a different angle, so maybe you can answer that question. Hope you vote.
Sure. For private entities, there's different requirements, but for a municipal entity, there really is no, I think, endgame, or I'm not aware of one at this time. I believe, though, that once we approach six years, I would fully expect that we would go out to bid again and perhaps bring another independent auditor in, because they would have been onboard for six years. But again, by that time, you know, city staff will have been onboard for a number of years, so that seems like an appropriate time to make a transition like that. So I don't see any issue with, you know, having them onboard for six years at this time.
Hi, Council. Javon Grogan, City Manager. I'll just kind of piggyback on that. Best practice is really about five to seven years to sit, send your audit out for an RFP and think about changing your auditor. You don't have to change, but that's typically the sweet spot. You really don't want to be changing your auditor every two or three years, but you also really don't want to go 10 years with the same auditor. And so cities do it in various different ways, but best practice in the industry is somewhere between that five to 10-year mark to at least put it out for bid, see if you have current, up-to-date pricing, and consider changing your auditor.
Can I get one more in there, Mayor? So legally, for a publicly bid service, what is prohibiting the firm, if there's nothing written on actually bidding on the services? Is it, so will we go another three more years and it's a publicly bid service? Is there some legal agreement that we sign saying, we're going to grant you this, but you can't bid on the following?
No, so I do think it's important to clarify our terms. So this is not a bid as in a low-cost construction, build a restroom project bid. This is a request for proposals, and under state law, the city has the authority to select whichever proposer it wishes, regardless of what the price is, as long as the proposer meets the qualifications and is the best qualified. And so, to answer your question, there is not any prohibition that would prevent a current participant to, from proposing in the next round, nor from having the city either select them or select somebody else.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Let's move on to F, which is a resolution approving the installation of red curb around the corners of the intersections of Cherry Avenue and Hickory Avenue, Cherry Avenue, Juniper Avenue, and Cherry Avenue and Holly Avenue.
Thank you. So, I guess a concern with this one is, originally, when this was presented to the committee, Traffic Safety Committee, there was a concern with the traffic along Cherry Avenue and the congestion, buses, cars, et cetera. And so there was a request to have the curbs painted on the west side. And I guess now that it's coming back and it's been, was denied, and now the recommendation is to red curb the corners, but staff also doesn't recommend that. And the reason for that recommendation is, you know, again, the maintenance and corners really, you know, aren't necessarily approved parking locations. This one here kind of bothers me in the sense that I don't see the concern with having to paint these red corners along Cherry. I almost want to concur with staff's recommendation that this is not a congested area where you see cars all over the place. I think that the better solution, if we were going to address the traffic and the concerns along Cherry Avenue, that would have been to eliminate the parking on the west side, but I know the number of residents that came in against that, and the decision was made, and I prefer the recommendation to deny that request. So, I kind of want to understand a little bit about how we got to where we're at today.
Good evening.
Jimmy?
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Jimmy Tan, Public Works Director. And I have my staff, Michael Cotto, here, who did the analysis for this project. He will be able to answer additional information. But I know there were extensive analyses that was done for this item, you know, as you can see in the staff report, it took, you know, about a year through data collection and then through the, you know, through the analysis that the staff has done, and through contact with SAM Trans regarding, you know, what their thoughts about putting in red curbs on the west side of 700 block of Cherry. So, you know, as I understood it, too, Michael, if you'd like to come here with me, as I understood it, you know, the issue was brought up by one resident in the city, you know, was concerned about the S curve that is there in regards to the narrow width of the roadway and also the bus traveling. So, staff did the analysis to determine whether there's any issues on that, and they had a meeting at the TSPC to discuss it, and then TSPC recommended that, you know, that the red curves shouldn't be taken into consideration and perhaps just painting the corners of the intersections instead. So, Michael, do you want to add any more to that? The second TSPC meeting as well.
So I think the reason that, and I don't want to put words in the mouth of the TSPC, but I believe the reason is that there were residents who were there. the TSBC, but I, I believe the reason is that there were residents who were there who did express some concern about the cars that were parking on the corners. It was somewhat related, but, you know, not exactly the same issue that was their problem with the area. And I think so the TSP, TSBC sort of just kind of shifted gears a little bit in that, you know, based on the feedback from the residents and also from SAM Trans, that they didn't feel the parking, you know, removing a whole block of parking was necessary, but that maybe they could address some of the, the people who came to the meeting, some of their concerns by recommending the, the red curb on the corners instead.
Is there, since we've got a couple of members from the, is it okay that anybody, if there's a comment or anything to add to that, would like to comment?
Let's, let's go through your staff. So, because they just gave, I think, a feedback from the meeting and the vote, so are we looking for something specific, or?
Anything, anything just, was it not already commented on? Okay. Thank you.
No, you're good. Okay. Are you in favor or opposed, or should we need to do this separately or together?
I...
You got a comment?
Sure. All right.
Got it. So I have a slightly different opinion, or actually, it's totally different. I think the red curb should be put in place. People really, most people, when they see red curb, it's clear to them, they're not going to park there. I'm into making sure where we can add safety, to improve the safety, that, that those red curbs are important. We need, we need, in my opinion, that it could be used in many other locations. And I think this is a great opportunity to, we have the, the cost, $1,500 cost to do this work, and we can see how that works out, and as we approach our budget, we could look at taking on more red curb to kind of see what it really costs to do it. My question to staff would be, in the event that we do proceed with putting this red curb, there is, there is a citation amount for parking in front of a red curb. Is there a, what would the cost be for parking at these curb returns when there's a curb ramp and the red curb? Is, is there two tickets that get issued, or is it just one ticket?
Good evening. Typically, it would be one citation. There's a difference between the red curb and the curb cutout for the handicap access, that the red curb does not extend beyond that, or through the, the entire width of the handicap access. So you're either parked in the, in the red zone, or you're parked blocking the, the crosswalk. So it would be one of two citations.
Got it. So that's one question. Thank you for that. I noticed in the report, maybe you can confirm this for me, that we have red curb, or we have bus stops identified in this, on this street, and there's no red curb at the bus stops. I did, I did a little walk down El Camino, and all of the red curbs on El Camino have, I mean, all of the bus stops in El Camino have red curbs. And then I went up, I went up Genovin, and there's no red curbs there either. So I think this would be an opportunity, or maybe you can tell me, when is it required to have a red curb in front of a bus stop? And if it is, then we are missing a number of them.
So, to my knowledge, there is not really any requirement that the bus stop has to be painted red. And that is generally something that between the transit agency and possibly the city could potentially initiate on our side as well, but between the two, you know, there would be some decision as to whether or not a bus stop, you know, could or should be painted red.
Okay. All right. That'll be a separate issue. I'm on the TSBC liaison, and we'll deal with that then, but that's, those are my questions. So thank you.
Okay. Let's just, since with the discussion, let's just take E and F separately, that we could put it together, but just to be safe. So can I have an action regarding, action on item E?
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second?
Motion made in second to approve item E under consent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five oh, voice.
Um, before...
Yes. I'm sorry, Mary.
No, that's okay. I, I just feel compelled to say a little something about this. I think, I understand your position about the red curbs. I walk that block almost every day, and I don't think it's going to help much about what the people were concerned with, about speeding and the narrowness of the street, which is unfortunate. But I think it will give a feeling of, of protected corners there, and people will have a little better vision, sight vision, line of sight, sorry, line of sight if, with those two pieces. So it's not a perfect solution, as we were saying earlier, but it is an improvement, I think, that'll, that'll help out. So with that, I will introduce, or move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve item F under consent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One.
Okay. Four, one. Moving on to conduct, oh, Mr. Cato, since you're here, off, off-topic. I wanted to let you know, and I know I expressed this, but I not only received an email from a resident in the area, we were just discussing, but also a letter in the mail, also, once again, complimenting you for your getting back to them in an extremely quick, timely fashion and assisting them. So since you're here, I want to publicly acknowledge that in front of the team, that thank you. For someone to write an email and write a letter, you've made an impression. Conduct to business.
Item 6A, hold a public hearing, waive first reading, and introduce an ordinance and resolution adding Chapter 12.260 to Title 12 zoning of the San Bruno Municipal Code establishing development impact fees.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Keith DiMartini. I'm the city's Finance Director, and it's my pleasure to present an overview of the Development Impact Fee Program and the first reading of the ordinance and resolution before you this evening. So here's the agenda for the presentation today. Give you a brief objective. I'll provide a brief overview of the Development Impact Fee Program. A lot of this was covered at the first public hearing on December 11th of 2018 as well. We'll talk about what the maximum allowable impact fees are by land use category, as described in the NEXUS study that was produced for this project. And then we will compare the maximum allowable fees with the staff recommended fee levels. We'll talk about the repealing of the current park dedication and in lieu fee. A brief overview of the ordinance and resolution before you. Talk about next steps and tonight's action, and we'd be happy to take any questions that you might have. So just an overview of, of the objective of this evening is, this is the public hearing to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 12.260 to Title 12 of the San Bruno Municipal Code establishing development impact fees. So just some brief overview. An impact fee is a one-time fee on new development to pay for new infrastructure improvements required to serve growth. Revenues collected are used to pay for public facilities and infrastructure needed to accommodate the growth in the city for many years to come. Developers pay impact fees. Fees are assessed when building permit applications are submitted, and they are due upon the building permit issuance. The fees are subject to a NEXUS study calculation, which requires a reasonable relationship between a government fee and the purpose of its use. Impact fees are set and they'll, and are to be adopted by the City Council. As noted in the last bullet, the fees themselves do not authorize new development projects. All projects will still be required to receive any planning entitlements or sequel review and any mitigation of specific, of project-specific impacts, as is the current process for the There are many rules governing how fees are to be used. They can only be used for capital, facility, and infrastructure costs. They cannot be used to fund operations. Fees can only be, can only fund new development's fair share of the total project's cost, based on the rational nexus documented in the NEXUS study. In other words, impact fees cannot be used to fund 100% of the costs of the city's capital needs. The law requires that the City Council approves impact fees and the purpose of its use, the relationship between the need for facilities and new development, and the proportional costs of the facilities attributable to the growth. And there is an annual reporting requirement. It's called the AB 1600 reporting requirement, and that will continue to be reported to City Council annually. And the NEXUS study, it's recommended to be update, updated at least once every five years to sort of rebase line the projects that are assumed in the NEXUS itself. There are many economic considerations with these fees. They do add to the cost of new construction, and they could affect new development penciling. The fees do create value in the long run, however, as they fund necessary infrastructure and improvements that support the new development, and ultimately improve the quality of life of the city's residents and people that visit. It's important to note that the fees do not directly influence real estate prices. The market forces determine the prices. And it's also noteworthy that most cities in the Bay Area have already adopted fairly robust, comprehensive development impact fee programs already. Fees of other nearby cities were taken into consideration by staff at a policy level when setting the staff recommended fee levels. Development in those cities continues to occur, and impact fee revenues go to fund critical municipal infrastructure improvements in those cities that would not be funded As mentioned, the fees were developed based on the capital facility needs of the city in order to meet the additional development demand. You'll see a list of the major capital and facility projects described in the NEXUS study here on this slide, that will be partially funded with the development impact fee revenues that will be generated over time. As presented on December 11th, the city contracted with EPS to prepare a NEXUS study. Jason Moody, the Principal at EPS, is here with us this evening and has worked extensively on this project from its inception. The Development Impact Fee NEXUS Study calculates a maximum allowable fee for community facilities, public safety, general government, transportation, and utility improvements. Fees are proposed to be assessed on the residential development projects, assessed for single-family and multifamily dwellings per unit, and for non-residential development projects, for office, industrial, retail, and hotel. That's calculated and assessed per square footage. Since we presented to you on December 11th, there were a handful of changes that the consultant team and the city team worked on, based on feedback received from City Council. The change in persons per household assumption to separate out single and multifamily, as requested by City Council, has been included in this, in this version here. And then there are a number of other assumptions that had been, had some minor tweaks to them in the NEXUS study, including some generation factors to separate out single and family, some land value assumption updates. We included an emergency response planning and exercise project. So there are a number of additional updates that went into the NEXUS study. And just a reminder that these, that the existing development impact fees for affordable housing will continue, propose to be continued, and they're not summarized on this slide. That's an existing impact fee that will continue. So it's important to note that the actual fee revenue will depend on both the level and the type of growth that occurs in the city over time. The high-level revenue estimate on this slide here, it assumes that there's more retail development, followed by office and hotel, respectively. It also assumes a higher proportion of single-family development relative to the low estimate. Both of these, both estimates assume a similar level of hotel development. So again, many assumptions into the revenue projection, which is why we provided a range on this slide. And although the NEXUS allows for the maximum allowable fee, the City Council can adopt an ordinance for the fees below the maximum allowable, if you choose to do so. Staff is recommending the development fee levels based on policy and other city program information that we presented back on December 11th. For single-family residential, industrial, retail, and hotel, staff are recommending reducing the fee from the maximum allowable level to the average of cities in San Mateo County. We believe that this would not unduly burden new development. It's important to note that the impact fee is applicable to construction of new residential units and would not be paid by the typical homeowner, who would merely be renovating or adding on to their existing home. For multifamily residential and for office, we are recommending the maximum allowable fee in the NEXUS study. For multifamily, the maximum allowable fee is below the average of cities in San Mateo County, which is why we want to recommend the maximum allowable. And then for office development, office development imposes a significant strain on the city's infrastructure, and impact fees will be a vital funding source to ensure that community, public safety, general government, transportation, and utility capital facility revenues are collected in order to maintain and enhance these facilities to support the growth of the office development. And the, the investment of this infrastructure will enhance the quality of life in those, those key commercial corridors. As I mentioned earlier, the impact fee ordinance is, is, is proposed to repeal Section 12.44.140 of the city's municipal code in its entirety. This section is more commonly known as the Quimby Fee, the Quimby Act Fee, and it's a parkland dedication requirement that is applicable only to certain land subdivisions and is authorized by state law. Developers usually fulfill their park dedication requirements by paying an in lieu fee that can be used to purchase and fund park improvements elsewhere. This was a source of funding for the acquisition of the Florida Park. But the city historically has not seen a large number of residential subdivisions in recent years, so the city has not collected a lot of fees for Park and Lou in recent years. There are challenges to the city's current ordinance, and it may have contributed to, to being a barrier to development of residential ownership units in the city. The current ordinance has a high standard. The fee is potentially part of the reason why the city has not seen residential development of ownership units, but rather rental units, since the fee does not apply to rental. A clearly defined community facilities development impact fee for all types of residential development with a clearly defined value will meet the city's interests to ensure that there is funding for parkland acquisitions and additional facility improvements to serve all new development going forward. So moving on to some highlights of the ordinance and the resolution before you. Developers are required to pay the development impact fees prior to the issuance, the issuance of the building permit. The city shall not issue a building permit for a development project unless the fees have been paid. There is a credit available to developers that involves the demolition of an existing structure and its replacement with a new structure. The developer is entitled to credits against those fees. In order to qualify for a credit, the developer must demonstrate that the building was either occupied by a resident or a business during six of the 12 months prior to the date of a complete building permit application. The credit will be calculated for the fee that would have been charged for the, for the development of the structure being demolished. As I mentioned earlier, we will continue to comply with the annual AB 1600 report, including all of the activities of new fee revenue coming in under the new comprehensive fee program, and how the city expends those funds. And then finally, I mentioned earlier, we will, we will plan to adhere to updating the NEXUS study at least once every five years, as I mentioned earlier. So some additional items that are noteworthy here. The ordinance does have an appeals process built into it. If the applicant, if the applicant believes that one or more of the fees that was calculated, was calculated incorrectly by the city, they, they can submit an appeal to the city manager. And the city manager has 30 days to respond. The ordinance also includes an annual inflationary adjustment. It really is designed so that the fee itself keeps pace with the cost of doing construction. The fees will be indexed annually, and it will be proposed to City Council during the annual budget process for the new, for the indexed new fees to be effective on July 1st, the beginning of the fiscal year. There will, at the time that the, that the Development Impact Fee Ordinance is presented, there will be a handful of development projects with submitted planning entitlement applications with the city. The impact fees will not be assessed on a development project if an... The impact fees will not be assessed on a development project if an application for the project has been deemed complete by the city no later than May 1st, 2019, and the city and the developer of the development project enter into a development agreement or another negotiated contract with the city for the project on or before August 1st, 2019. There are normally no exceptions for pipeline projects that are not deemed complete by the effective date of the fees. However, the city is responding to concerns that we've received that have been raised by various applicants of major projects, that these fees are a significant unanticipated project expense to them. We've developed a timeline that ensures that the city has time to negotiate agreements with the developers while we continue to process these pipeline applications. We're also proposing a reduction to accessory dwelling unit projects. They're required to pay various permit and utility connection fees as it as it is today. And the additional fees are are posing a large increase of permit fees in total for seeing these ADU projects through to approval. The size of the ADUs is limited to 640 square feet in the zoning code, and they're typically about 50%, about half of the size of a multifamily unit with about half of the persons per unit. So the proposed ordinance stipulates that ADUs are subject to 50% of the fee for the multifamily residential dwelling unit to reduce the permitting fee burden on those projects. And then the last note here is about procedures. This is a brand new, this will be a brand new program for the city, so it will require us to create policies and procedures. It will require us to develop some training materials for staff that are involved with calculating the fee, the staff and finance for the accounting treatment of the fees, the reporting, updating the master fee schedule. We'll be including fee activity in during our budget process. So there are quite a number of things that it will take for the city to administer this program once the ordinance has been adopted by the city council. So just moving on to next steps here. As I mentioned earlier, staff has been working with EPS for a couple of years now on developing all of the assumptions and the technical studies that go into the Nexus study. We had this, we had the first public meeting on December 11th, 2018, as I mentioned earlier. And tonight before you is the first reading of the impact fee program, of the impact fee ordinance and the resolution. The second reading is scheduled for the next city council meeting on February 26th. And if council decides to move forward to adopt the ordinance at that time, the fees will take effect 60 days after the ordinance is adopted. So we will, we would like to have the effective date be at the first of the month, so that is looking as May 1st, 2019, when the fees would take effect. In preparation for that, in preparation for this meeting tonight, we, staff did reach out to 21 developers that have proposed or current or recently completed projects with the city and the Building Industry Association on November 19th. And then we reached out to them again on January 29th to let them know that the first reading will be tonight before city council. We really wanted to make sure that that the city's development community was well informed about our plans to move forward. And the city clerk also published the public notice requirements on February 1st and February So just to wrap up, our request tonight is to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance, adding chapter 12.260 to title 12 of the San Bruno Municipal Code, establishing development impact fees. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Does council have any initial questions for the director? Because this is a public hearing, so we, I know we do have some speaker cards.
Through the chair. Yes. Get my questions out of there.
Please.
So one question I had was just in the timing. It seems like we're gonna wait almost, you know, till the end of the the year or near, at least the end of the summer before this would would kick in. Any reason why we wouldn't want to do it sooner? It seems like we're already a little late to the to the party.
Thank you for your question. There is a new fee ordinance, I believe, requires a 60-day requirement before the new fees take effect. And so we cannot implement the new program and start assessing and charging the fees any earlier than 60 days after the ordinance is adopted by the city council.
Okay. And as a piggyback to that, while that is, that is true, the, for pipeline projects, there are two dates. There's the deemed complete by May 1st and having entered into a development agreement or a, or some other agreement with the city by August 1st. It is likely that that the ordinance will have taken effect for other projects that didn't meet that first May deadline before August 1st. And so that May to August deadline is essentially allowing us time to negotiate with the pipeline projects. It's not stopping the implementation of the ordinance or making that 60-day time period longer.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Also related to the, the Park and Lou portion of this, and I try to read through the Nexus report and understand all the different components that, how you break it down. It's, it's really actually very interesting how you accommodate for all these different things. But I'm wondering, are there gonna be any more restrictions now on those funds than we had? With the, with the Park and Lou, it seemed like we could just kind of hold those funds indefinitely, and then when an appropriate project came up, we were able to assign it. Now that we're actually considering very specific things and and accounting for those and and allocating portions of things based on employees and how many residents, how many units, are we gonna have more restrictions then on how we can use those funds?
I'll ask Jason Moody, our consultant from EPS, to answer that question.
The actual impact fee program does identify the projects for which the park funds can be used for. And and it's based on a service standard, which says, you know, a number of acres per per thousand. So you can, you, as long as you're investing in parks and you're meeting that service standard, you can do that. There's other, other specific elements as well. Also, in many ways, the impact fee program is a little more flexible because the, the Quimby fee is really for land. And then you, the, the capital facilities can be used for land and improvement. So it gives you a little more flexibility to use it for land improvements. I would also add that you do update the, the, the impact fee every five years so that you can kind of take a look at the projects that you had listed, and if some of them need to come in or out, you can do that and still keep the money you've collected and reorient it to the new project. So it's actually not that inflexible. It does give you a fair amount of flexibility in the time the projects do.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And, oh, the other, last question I had was just regarding the one, the sections where we're, where staff is recommending that we not go to the maximum. Would it hurt us to just go for the maximum and then use that as a negotiation point with each development where if they could somehow negotiate down? Or, or once we set these, is that set in stone?
Once you set it, that will be the fee that every developer would pay. I do want to correct one thing that Keith said. We didn't base our recommendation off of all of the cities in San Mateo County. We based it off of the, the peer cities that we looked at in San Mateo County, which was largely reflective of our neighboring cities with some others that have development impact fees.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That was it.
Laura, anything for now?
No.
Before public hearing? Marty? Before public hearing?
Sure. Thank you for that complicated report. It's very thorough. I do appreciate that the inflation is already in there, so it makes it kind of automatic, so we just keep on moving forward. Two, two things that I wasn't exactly clear on, this, this credit development, can you give me an example of what that range and of the credit would be? I just not really, I just didn't get that.
So just sort of conceptually, if there is a, a retail building on a lot that is going to be redeveloped with another retail building, but much bigger, let's say the retail building that's being demolished is 20,000 square feet.
Oh, it's like that size.
And the new retail development's gonna be 100,000 square feet. Well, the fee that gets calculated will be reduced by the fee of the, of the 20,000 square foot unit. So it's proportionally reduced by the use that's on the existing lot that's currently there.
Okay. My other question's for our city manager in that there is an appeal process. So if, if a developer doesn't like the fees, they appeal to the city manager, city manager says yea or nay, and then the project comes to the council with the understanding that the city manager approved or denied the appeal. Just before the process, to understand how that works.
The process is that the city manager's decision is binding. It is not to say whether the fee applies. It is an appeal based on the calculation method. So the typical example is to use Keith, Keith's example. If the developer is questioning the city's calculation of existing square footage or our basis for calculating the fee, the city manager would not have discretion to change the fee amount or waive the fee for the, the development. With your adoption, these fees will apply to all projects that they're subject to.
Okay. And, and just so I'm aware, or maybe the public's aware, of the handful of projects that are on the cusp of this being, impacting them, I was wondering if you could possibly share those just so that we're aware of it?
Sure. The two most significant ones are the Mills Park development, and that is the, the development along El Camino Real, boarded by Canes and San Bruno Ave.
Got it.
And a nine-unit residential development on Sylvan Avenue.
Got it.
There may be one other, which is why Darcy, our community development director, has come up.
Hi. Yes. Darcy Smith, Community and Economic Development Director. So there's just a few more, and we anticipate those will not be deemed complete by May 30th, but, or May 1st, but you just never know. Applications can move very fast, so I just want to mention those in full disclosure. Glenview Terrace is a 29-unit single-family project that we've been working on since middle of 2016 in various stages, and it, it was on hold for a while, but it's since now revived itself. There's a 34-room hotel at 160 El Camino Real that was just submitted in March, and we doubt will be complete, but I, again, just want to mention it. And then we have a 24-unit residential project at 271 El Camino Real, the Old Lees Buffet. We thought those were unlikely, but those are the biggest projects.
So the two that I've mentioned are the two that we are actively negotiating with, and those are the two that will likely fall between that window of being deemed complete by May 1st and likely to have entered into an agreement by August 1st.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. You can call the speakers, please.
Suresh Gandhi.
So honorable mayor and members of the city council. My name is Suresh Gandhi, and my business address is 501 Eastern Avenue. I'm here before you today particularly to discuss my view and concerns about the proposed impact fee ordinance that you're considering. First of all, I agree with the general concept. The city needs to do long-term planning and provide for all the infrastructure or anything that need goes with the development. But what I don't agree with that is the current project, which are in pipeline, as far as I understand, that's the definition city gives, our project is in pipeline. I don't know whether that's a pipeline or not. We have already filed all our papers for the application that's required by the city. We have done all the reports that require for the permit. We have paid all the fees that's required so far for this process. And as far as we are concerned, we have official letter from City of San Bruno that our project is deemed complete. In my view, this qualifies for exemption right away. The fact that, the fact that interpretation, city making differently, is questionable. Reason for that, the project is not complete because not us, it's because the city. City has not done their homework. They are busy. They probably don't have staff, and that's why the progress is not done. On August 31st, somewhere in August, this letter was given to me from the city that we complied with everything. On August 11th, we had architectural review committee that approved our project and recommended to send it to the planning commission for the further review. I have several letters and email to the city. When are you going to bring this to the city council or the planning commission? We still don't get any answer, and that's the reason we are here. Now, remember this, this project is basically, we are developing under the CBD zoning. This law was passed in 2014, and we are in 2019. We are five years here, and still the city has not upgraded the zoning, and that is why we are in this bad situation. And when I say bad situation, this procedure, I don't know you know or not, but I'm with the city for more than two years. This is the worst nightmare experience that I have as a developer. I did 30 developments all over California. This is the worst experience I'm having. Reason for that, because this zoning requires that you have to go through two-step. You have to pre-approval, and then you have to go to the approval. That costs more money, time, everything adds up, you know? And it has taken time. Before I bought this building, this building was sitting empty for 10 years. It has been really a shame on the city because I saw there is a handicap, I mean, there is homeless people going in there. It's such a bad situation. People are not maintaining nothing like that. I took up upon me and met the city, and I said, I would like to develop this before I bought it. Would you be willing to that? And city, you know, said, yes, we would like to work with you. And that's when I bought it. And I put my investment into that, my hard-earned money, I put into that to develop this project to provide the needed housing for the city. And here I am, still after two years, I don't have any permit, I don't have any entitlement. I can even, city is asking me, give me schedule when you're going to do the work. I said, but give me permit first before I can do. They're asking me, give me later. Where do you start construction? Where do these, where do?
Mr. Gandhi, if you could conclude your comments.
Sorry?
If you can start to conclude your comments, you're, you've exceeded your time.
Okay. So anyway, my, my concern here is it should not apply to this. This is the ninth innings of the game. You cannot change the law. It's not, it's not a question of fairness, but I think it's unethical for the city. It will go negatively for any, any project the city, somebody wants to do it. Even United States government, they cannot change the law on December 30th or 30th and say, okay, any transaction you did in last year, we are going to tax you at the new rate. They cannot do that. No, sir. It's unconstitutional. So anything the city wants to do at this stage is not good. The last thing I want to do is.
Quickly, please, Mr. Gandhi.
Sorry?
Quickly, please.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Can I get Allen's two minutes' time and conclude then?
No. Your, your time has exceeded, and I'm being more than gracious because I understand your.
So you want me to write to the city and do that way? Is that what you want?
No, sir. It's, you have three minutes to speak and.
This is, this is the chance I got to explain to you.
I've allowed it to go almost four minutes, Mr. Gandhi. Mr. Gandhi, everybody, every speaker has a time.
I understand.
So I'm trying to be fair to everybody equally.
I wanted to make, I wanted to make my point as far as what, what I'm, I'm asking you, so maybe it will be helpful. So you have a two timeline you are mentioning here, that any project that's done by May, May 31st, and then the August deadline, you know? And that's very cumbersome. Make it one deadline, give enough time for people to finish the process so they have a chance to do what they want to do. And I think that's, that's all it is. That's my, that's my request.
Thank you for your comments.
Andy Mason.
Thank you. Andy Mason, Cherry Avenue. Overall, I agree with, hello, how's it going? Honorable mayor and council, it's a pleasure to speak here tonight. Overall, I agree with staff's recommendation about the fee schedule. I think that's long overdue. I have five major points I want to bring up about the parks designation. One, I think it's be really behoove staff as well as the council to look into. One, what was the original thought behind the original parks designation? I think open space and parks, those are all very broader social issues we should look into. Two, I want to see how this actually relates to the city's general plan in terms of open space and parkland use. That's whenever we change an ordinance or whatnot, we have to make sure it aligns with the general plan. I think that's really important, the way that's worded currently about open space. Three, in the interest of current expediency of trying to push capital projects, I understand we want to allow developers to move into San Bruno and push forward on that. But that parks designation is really something that requires almost a study session. parks designation is really something that requires almost a study session or really thoughtful deliberation as a community. And four, it's not so much about the next five to 10 years look like, it's next 50 or 100 years of open space, parks, park land. It's a larger social picture, so I'm just asking you to look into this, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Someone left their phone here, so...
Oh, I think it's Mr. Gandhi's. Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Okay, were there any other speakers on this? No other speaker cards? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and we're going to take action and close the public hearing, so this is your last opportunity. If not, action?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 5-0. Did staff want to at all discuss or respond to any of our speaker comments or initial counsel, or do you want to go back to counsel?
I think we should go back to counsel, and we will respond to questions.
Okay. Counsel, follow-up questions or questions to staff?
I don't, I don't have a question per se. I think there seems to be a lot of confusion about what the Park and Lou fee, if we do away with the Park and Lou fee, what is taking its place? So, could you clarify that? And that's, that's my first one.
Sure. I'll have Keith go into the mechanics in a little bit. I think it's important to note that the current Quimby fee did not apply to ownership units. It only, I'm sorry, did not apply to rental units. It only applied to ownership units. It's also important to note that the development impact fee calculation includes park improvements, and so we do not want both fees on the books for, because we do not want to be double-charged in development. And so, we looked at this carefully with staff and with outside counsel, and decided that the most appropriate method was to have one clear development impact fee versus a, the development impact fee calculation not including parks, and having our somewhat challenging existing Quimby fee be what is charged on, be the revenue recruitment mechanism for parkland because it only includes rental units. In addition, I think it's important that there be a clear understanding that there will be money with impact fees for parkland. So, what, the biggest hurdle that we have with the DIF is that there's an annual reporting requirement that the Quimby fee did not have. And so, yes, we will have to do some annual reporting, but we will still be able to use that money for both infrastructure and land purchase, whereas with the Quimby fee, it could only be used for the land acquisition, not the infrastructure.
This is Keith. I really don't have more to add other than that, but just to reiterate, the money that we would have collected with the Park and Lou fee will now be collected using the community facilities fee. So, we cannot double count, so we have to, we are planning to repeal the Quimby fee, and what's taking its place, and then some, is the community facilities fee.
Okay, and, and just to be clear for everyone, this also broadens who we collect the fee from. So, before it was you could only collect it from owner-owned properties, and this one you can collect it from owner and rental.
Yeah, and we are collecting it on both residential and non-residential projects as well.
Okay, so, we're broadening our base of who we collect it from, so subsequently we'll get more money. And, and I, I think it's also important to realize, we've only added one park, we've only purchased land, and we haven't added the park yet. We've only purchased the land for one park, and I think in, I don't even know, 50 years or something. So, that, that's why this is an important change too, so that we can use the money for not just acquiring land, but also for helping with the facilities themselves. So, I want to make that comment. Go ahead.
No, no, since we're on that topic, because I think the question may have been as well, is the Park and Lou fees versus community fees, or however you term it, is there any difference then between what it can be utilized for, for the open space or for the parks? And I think that might have been one of the questions Mr. Mason had had since we're on that topic.
Yeah, so, in the Nexus Study, it does list the various capital and infrastructure facility projects that the city would plan to use the community facilities impact fee revenue for. But I believe, as mentioned earlier, the Park and Lou fee was fairly restrictive, in that it can only be used really primarily for the park acquisition, whereas the community facilities impact fee can be used for the park acquisition and facilities and other infrastructure capital needs that the city will need to respond to with the additional development. So, it's, and it gives us flexibility to implement and execute on capital projects when the fee that's being collected can be used broadly across those uses.
Okay, thank you.
Since we're on that. Other questions? Marty?
So, I appreciate that flexibility, but I was, I'm concerned that we won't, we'll draw down on it too quickly and not have the money for the parks and for the capital improvement, for, in case we wanted to get property and the capital improvements for parks. So, would it be very difficult to split up the community column so that those are two separate items, so that we're retaining the park component?
The way, the way the community facilities fee is structured, going back to the PowerPoint, there are a number of different categories, and there are projects that make up each of the category. Community, public safety, general government, transportation, utilities. The impact fee revenue will go into those specific buckets.
Got it.
And can be used for community facilities in those very specific buckets. The Nexus Study goes into more detail. And so, while there is a mechanism to borrow from another pot, it has to be paid back. So, for example, if at some point we had only a million dollars of park money generated from the community facilities project, but we had a $1.5 million project, we could borrow from, let's say, the general government portion to do that project with a repayment schedule. So, it provides that flexibility, and we're, we are not limited to only the projects that were identified in the Nexus Study. If in a year, a new park project came up that was not envisioned when we completed the study, we could fund that project with the community facility money.
If I may, just add to the city manager's response on that, on that question. During the annual budget process, when we present the proposed capital and process, the CIP budget before City Council, as in prior years, we will list the proposed capital projects for the upcoming budget cycle and for the five out-years going forward. Part of the CIP budget is not only what projects we hope to implement during that time, but what revenue sources we plan to implement the projects with. And so, we will very clearly articulate impact fee revenue as a funding source for capital project implementation over the years. So, you will see through our budgeting process, through the annual AB 1600 reporting requirement, through those sources, we will, we will make it very transparent how the impact fee money will be spent, based on City Council's recommendations and approval.
Good.
So, I appreciate all that. I think that's great. It's just that if we, if we have two separate buckets in the community fee, right, and it's great, everything that so far I've heard is great, but if we had two buckets, we make sure that we're not going to drain, or we won't drain out the bucket for the parks, that we would always have that money coming in a certain percent of that, and I would feel better with that.
Fair. I think one consideration is that it is ultimately council's decision, and so, whether you have that differentiation or not, you can decide whether you want to use a portion on just land acquisition and a portion on the improvements. I also think we don't know specifically what projects we will develop in five or 10 years, and so providing council with maximum flexibility is an important consideration. And so, having it in one group that can be used for park facilities may be more beneficial and provide more flexibility to council, because you don't know what project you'll be facing in five years, and the land may be inexpensive, but the facilities may cost more. The land may be expensive, and you're doing a dog park, and so you're going to need less money for infrastructure. And so, I think flexibility would probably give the City Council the most discretion, and at the end of the day, it, how you spend it would be a decision of the City Council.
Through the count. So, good presentation, and thank you for a lot of those questions that were answered that, oh, you answered that question, no, you answered that question. But I think, I think what's important, I think what I keep hearing, is that the council has to have some long-term goals, and this is a tough decision today to kind of talk about this, but I know with Park and Lou fees, that you have a bucket, you have money, you know you've got it, and you kind of let it build up, and as things kind of, the future comes out, well, how do we provide something? What's the need in the community? And so, I think we'll get there at time, but I also think it's also a revenue source for infrastructure, and that's really a big piece of it. So, I appreciate your comments regarding that, that piece, but I think we'll get there, and I think the council needs to have some long-term visions to, for us to get there.
I was going to say, through the chair. One thing Mr. Gandhi did bring up is about the two-step process, and I think for folks that doesn't, don't understand what that is, or what that is, good or bad, I think needs to be explained, one, and then, two, of course, there was concern and frustration on that process elongating it, and so, can we address that?
Sure. I think, specific to Mr. Gandhi's case, he did receive a letter from the city in August that said that his application was complete. The application is complete, and we do have what we need in to continue to process that. I think there's a confusion on application being complete and project approved. The project is not approved, the project still needs approval from the Planning Commission, and then ultimately the City Council. And so, it is very much in all of our development projects or applications, a two-step process. A package is submitted, that package is reviewed, that package is deemed complete, and then it goes through the process to be approved at the various levels. Mr. Gandhi's project is in that piece where it's being approved and needs to go to Planning Commission and then City Council. The two dates that we have, Mr. Gandhi's project has already met the first date, which is being deemed complete. The second date of August 1st is allowing us time from now to then to complete the conversations that have already begun with Mr. Gandhi for what the, what would have been impact fee revenue payment would be to the city. And so, those conversations are happening now and will continue to occur.
And I appreciate that, but when he was saying a two-step process, I think it's initiating the first stage, going into community development, getting kind of a guidance, shall we say, parameters, and then coming back again, and I think that's what he's referencing to the two steps. So, is that correct, or?
Yes.
Okay. And, and so, to answer the question, in case folks are listening to, is what was the rationale for going to a two-step process? Which can, in some cases maybe not, in some cases could, make it longer.
So, Mr. Gandhi's project is in the transit corridors plan, and in the transit corridor, we have a pre-application process. And so, he did go through that pre-application process. There are additional requirements and regulations, and frankly, benefits to properties in the transit corridor. So, that pre-application process is an opportunity for the developer or property owner to learn about the intricacies of being in the transit corridor before an application is submitted, which requires a lot of expenditure funds. And so, we want to have, we wanted to have that pre-application to have an avenue to provide clear and consistent information.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments?
One last question. As we were going through the discussion, I was thinking about, the culture and arts, I believe, had some component that would, there was some fund that would, that development, I believe, was feeding that, right? And I was wondering if that's being preserved.
Yes.
That's through the process.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Director.
Sorry, yes, that fee will, will stay. That fee is not proposed to be modified or repealed in any way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I guess one last comment in reference to, you know, we hear that as council members a lot about projects in San Bruno, and the process that it takes, and, you know, you know, the comment that was heard tonight, this is, you know, the worst nightmare as a developer in, in working with San Bruno, and, you know, before it was this city, before it was that city. But I think the point is, is that we're getting better, and we know it's not right, and I appreciate staff's time to make it better. And so, we're getting there. And I think that, to Mr. Gandhi and to anybody else in the, in the audience, that is, you know, we're not perfect, we will make mistakes, but we'll make it right, and I think that as, you know, the new leadership in, in the City Hall, we're doing a good job, and I, I know we'll get there, and I know that things will get better. So, you know, what was is was, and what is going forward will always be the best that we can do. So, I appreciate everybody's hard work.
Any other questions from council? Any action? There is a reading?
I was going to ask, can we make a motion to both waive the reading and approve the ordinance and resolution, or do we need to take those separately?
They need to be separate. So, we'll first need a motion, and a second, and an approval to waive the first reading.
Okay, so I will make a motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
Motion made in second to waive the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
5-0. Now, action on the...
I will then make a motion, or make a motion to approve the ordinance, adding Chapter 12.260 to Title 12.
Second?
Oh, second. Sorry. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments, Mr. Mason, Mr. Gandhi. Next item of consent, or conduct, I'm sorry.
Item 6B, adopt resolutions for legislative actions required to approve an official statement and purchase contract in connection with the refunding of outstanding certificates of participation, Series 2000 Police Facility Financing.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Keith DiMartini, the City's Finance Director. It's my pleasure to present an overview of the refunding of the certificates of participation debt on the police facility with lease revenue bonds. The city's municipal advisor, Jim Fabian, from Field Bin Roll-Up and Associates, is here with us this evening and has worked on this project extensively with me and the financing team. And I will present just a brief overview of the debt refinancing to council. We had made, delivered a presentation on November 13th, 2018, requesting basically your pre-approval for us to proceed, and tonight we'll be asking for your final action to proceed with the bond sale. So, the agenda, the agenda for the presentation this evening will just be a brief objective and a review of the current 2,000 certificates of participation, or more commonly known as the COPs. I'll give you a list of all the people that have been on the financing team for this refinancing. I'll give you an overview of the proposed lease revenue bond refinancing structure, the debt issuance process, tonight's action, and then any questions that you may have. So, there are two requests before you. One, as acting as the City Council, and the other as acting as the San Bruno Public Financing Authority. And we'll be requesting the adoption of a resolution to the, of the City Council and the Financing Authority of approving of the official statement and the purchase contract in connection with the lease financing and approving related documents and the official actions. So, just a brief review of the existing certificates of participation on the police facility. In 2000, the city issued $9.6 million of COPs to fund the construction of the police facility. The debt service payments are approximately $650,000 annually, and it is an obligation of the city's general fund. However, it is paid by the successor agency, formerly the Redevelopment Agency, from tax revenues, which were formerly tax increment revenues, that are included in our successor agency's annual recognized obligation payment schedule, or ROPS, that we work on the County Oversight Committee with, the County Oversight Board. The reimbursement agreement is between the city and the Redevelopment Agency, and it was dated on December 1st of 2000. So, today, the 2,000 COPs have a remaining principal balance of just under $6 million, and it bears an interest rate between 5.15% and 5.25%. The February... The February 1st principal payment was $335, and it will be paid in the fiscal year 1819 ROPS schedule that was approved. So, the remaining balance that we're proposing to refund and refinance is $5,660,000. So, the financing team members involved, I've been working very closely with our bond disclosure council, which is Jones Hall. Jim Fabian is our primary contact, and he's our municipal financial advisor from Fieldman Rollup and Associates. Bond underwriter is Prager and Company. The trustee where the funds will be held is Union Bank. And then the rating agency that gave us a rating is Standard and Poor's, or S&amp;P. So, an overview of the proposed lease revenue bond for Series 2019, again, secured by the city's general fund, but paid, again, from the tax revenues per the amended reimbursement agreement through the successor agency. There is no debt service reserve fund. It will bear a fixed rate. It will have a 12-year term, which does not represent any change to the existing term on the 2,000 COPs, so they will expire at the same date. It is estimated that the 2019 lease revenue bonds will produce net present value savings of approximately 12 percent, which far exceeds the standard set by the Government Finance Officers Association and in the city's debt policy. The average annual reduction in the debt service payments will be approximately $128,000. Many taxing entities in San Mateo County will reap the benefits of us refinancing this debt. The city's share of this net present value savings is $19,000 annually. The estimated true interest cost of the debt will be around 2.78 percent, so again, significantly lower than the 5.25 percent on our existing COP, with a total net present value savings over the life of the indebtedness of $1.5 million. The city did receive an S&amp;P, excuse me, a credit rating from S&amp;P for this refinancing issuance. We received a AA+ rating, which is on the scale shown here on this slide, a very high-grade credit rating. The S&amp;P report noted that the economy in San Bruno is very strong, there's strong management, there are strong and good financial policies and practices that the city employs, there are strong budgetary performance with operating surpluses noting our strong reserve balances, and the city has strong budget flexibility and liquidity to respond and to adopt budgets that meet the city's needs. So, again, this is a testament to the financial situation of the city, and we've yielded a very high credit rating, which is excellent. So, the process has been rather long. It's taken a number of months to get to this point. There were many approvals required, both from the city council, the successor agency, the public financing authority, the county oversight committee with the county, and then ultimately the Department of Finance of the state had to approve of us doing this. We secured an underlying credit rating recently, and tonight before you is the final action of the city council and the public financing authority. We will then very quickly move to negotiating the sale of the bonds, and we anticipate closing on March 21st. So, again, just to reiterate, tonight's actions, we're requesting the city council and the public financing authority adopting a resolution, approving the official statement and purchase contract in connection with the lease financing, and approving related documents and official actions. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Through the chair?
Yeah.
So, the certificates of participation and these new lease-based bond, to me, they sound like essentially the same thing. They're bonds issued, and they're repaid by lease payments. So, what is the difference between the two?
Yes, hi. Jim Fabian of Fieldman Rollup. There really is not any distinctive difference. It really goes to the preference of bond investors. And so, back in the 80s and 90s, certificates of participation were used very commonly. And since then, though, lease revenue bonds have replaced their use. And what we're recommending is the use of lease revenue bonds, and that's been in the approval process since we started in November. And we think that that is what investors want, and we think it's the best approach. But it's not a lot of difference. I mean, it's more substantive or style, so to speak, because you, as an individual bond investor or bond fund, will buy bonds in denomination of $5,000. If you had certificates of participation, you would buy certificates of participation in denominations of $5,000, and then you would have rights to receive principal and interest payments, still exactly what you have under the lease revenue bonds.
And so, is one deemed riskier, and is that what drives the interest rates?
Well, the, no. I mean, it's really, again, preference of investors and the evolution. A lot of people still use certificates of participation, and it's more based upon what you're doing and in terms of what you're financing. And in this case, because we're using the financing authority, we think the lease revenue bonds approach is better, and we would recommend that you move forward with that. But they're still used. COPs haven't gone away. I mean, they're still out there and can be used, but the preference now is to use lease revenue bonds, and that's what we have recommended to staff in putting together the financing in front of you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? All right, please.
So, currently, the costs are paid through the successor agency, and there's nothing burdened out of the general fund?
That is correct. There is no true burden on the general fund to pay the debt. It is approved through the annual ROPS process, and the ROPS process will be adjusted for the debt, the change in the debt from the refinancing.
That's great.
For the police facility?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I just didn't want to think it was for the payment of the salary. That's what I meant. So, Bart owns the land. The city is, I'm sorry.
I turned it off. Thank you, sorry. Bart owns the property, where the police station sits, and we, the city of San Bruno owns the facility. How long is that relationship? I think at the last council meeting, I asked the question like, so this lease of where are we at? We own, can you maybe can help fill that in part for now?
You know, I don't know the term of that. Typically, things like that are structured with a very long, almost indefinite term. We can research that. I don't recall what the term of that is, but typically, the relationship will stay as long as the two parties continue to agree. And it's very hard to unwind, because we own the building on top of their land. But the agreement is that Bart PD gets the use of the police station as essentially a Bart police substation, and so the relationship has been working very well.
Okay. And I didn't mention, congratulations on obtaining the second highest rating possible. Just curious, what would it have taken to get that higher? You know, because, you know, you got to strive for it. You got to have a goal, and just how close were we? What do we need to do?
Sure. Well, I want to make sure that the distinction is not left unsaid. You are a AAA-rated city. So, when S&amp;P looks at the city, the financing, the management, the policy framework of the city, they rate you a AAA, and they stated that in their report. This specific bond issue, and any bond issue of a AAA city, would be a notch lower, because it's a lease transaction. So, that's why it's a AA+. But specifically in the report, like with the wastewater and the water bonds, they recognized you as a AAA city. And because of the nature of a lease where you have contractual relationship, it's a notch lower. So, any AAA city would have a AA+ lease revenue bond. And so, I think, again, kudos to the city council, the mayor, and staff for maintaining that rating, and it just speaks volumes to the way the city has been run.
Thank you for that. My final question is, of the costs associated with getting this, these revenue bonds, lease revenue bonds out, are those all recoverable and chargeable back to the original? You're nodding, go ahead.
So, all closing costs are paid out of the closing of the sale. So, they're paid out of the transaction.
All costs.
And so, they're incorporated, yeah, they're incorporated with the statistics that I showed to you this evening, the net present value savings, the rate, it's all adjusted based on the closing costs.
Thank you for that.
Closing costs and consultant and bond.
All costs, okay. That's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Irene, or Michael, anything else?
I'm not 100% sure, but I was there when we did the lease, and I believe it's 50 years.
Do you have conference?
It was either 50 or 99.
I'm not 100% sure. I don't have that.
Maybe we can get a copy of that at some point? That'd be great. Thank you.
We'll look it up and provide it as an off-agenda memo to council. Thank you. Okay, so we have this item before us. If the action is in the affirmative, we'll need two adoptions of two resolutions, one is the city council, and one is the public financing authority. So, any action by council?
Sure. Go ahead. We've done it.
I'll motion to adopt resolution, city council, San Bruno approving the official statement and purchase the contract in connection with the leasing financing, approving of related documents and official actions.
Thank you. Wow. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Now, we have, would need a resolution as the public financing authority. So moved.
Second. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Director. One moment.
Yeah. We now switch to directors.
Switch to directors. Director Davis?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director Salazar?
Aye.
Director O'Connell?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye. Thank you all. Thank you, staff. Thank you for your work.
Very much.
Next, we have comments from council members. Do we have any comments?
I do.
Please.
Every year, we start out talking about Operation Clean Sweep way ahead of time. Operation Clean Sweep starts or is on the first Saturday of May, and this year it's May 4th. And this year, we're also doing something a little different. We're asking students, all students, any students in San Bruno from grades three through five, to submit a logo or drawing about what they do for Earth Day, which is how we started Operation Clean Sweep. It was supposed to be in conjunction with that. So, if you, your teacher should have been giving you this, or it should have been sent to your parents. It's also on our city website, and it talks about the contest, and there's an application that looks like this, and there'll be posters, and applications will also be available at the city library. And we will be judging them during March. They're due March 1st, and the first winner will be presented with a certificate here at the city council meeting in April, and the logo will be used on our advertisement for Operation Clean Sweep. So, that's my announcement. So, mark your date, May 4th.
May 4th. Good catch.
Oh, that's a good thing.
Marty?
I got two things. We had a public comment, and I wanted to just kind of explain a little bit. I was at Jerry Hill Coffee Chat downtown San Bruno, and Mr. Chandra came up to me and said, hey, I'm so-and-so, and I have this issue, and it's really, really important, and I really would like to talk to the council, and how could we do this? And my first reaction was, you know, which is open to everybody, you come to the council, you get three minutes, you can talk about anything you'd like. And from there, we'll see what happens from it. But I just wanted to make sure it was clear that I didn't ask him or propose that he take that issue, it was just that informing him of the process of that, and how that could be anything anybody wants. The second thing that I wanted to mention is, San Bruno baseball's back. It didn't really go away, but it's, the season's on, so baseball tradition in San Bruno is amazing, so I just wanted to remind everybody that it's back, and that you'll see a bunch of boys and girls playing baseball this year. So, thank you, and have everybody have a great season.
Through the chair, I just, I didn't make this comment earlier, but I wanted to thank Keith and for the work on, I mean, coming to us as a city council and reviewing this document, and I was just pleasantly very surprised, but very excited about these changes. And you're worth your weight in gold, and to the city manager as well, thank you for your work on that, and to staff that works on getting us this grade A, this grade A rate. We're very lucky, so thank you.
Very quickly, I wanted to comment, I already went out, but the SBPD Traffic Division Quarterly Report that went out had, I thought, a lot of good information. I learned quite a bit from the replacement of our motorcycle of 13-years-old. Also, some of the campaigns that have been established was the drinking and driving checkpoints, as well as going out into blocked sidewalks and parking the right way, and trying to work with the community to try to address some of those concerns. It also was nice, under the parking CSOs hired, that as noted in the article, that this is the first time in five years that the CSO staff has been fully and completely with all of its staff members present. And keeping in mind that it is a stepping mechanism for a lot of folks who want to go and seek law enforcement, so they don't stay a long time, but it has been five years since we've had a full complement of staff. So, I'm happy to see that. And so, just wanted to let you know that it is available, and it does show that citations for the current quarter were, are, or last one, or is 4,260, and the last previous quarter was at 3,463. So, we do know that they are out, we do know that they are writing those. But it is available, and so I just wanted to comment on that. We did have a closed session that was set up for, prior to this meeting, but with the planning commission interviews, those were not able, that we weren't able to go ahead and do that. So, we will be adjourning to the closed session, which is in regards to conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9, California Public Utilities Commission order instituting investigation matters. With nothing more, everyone have a good rest of your week. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you very much, guys.